The regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas will now come to order. We will have the invocation followed by the pledge and the invocation will be by Reverend Jones of the Second Baptist Church.
Yeah. You're fixing this.
Here we offer a word of prayer. By the name of heaven we thank thee for the many blessed lives that store before us. We thank thee for things being as well as they are. I thank thee for the entering into a brand new year. We thank thee for the council and for the city of Pleasanton and our surrounding counties for the goals in which we have met during our last year. Maybe some of the goals we didn't meet, we pray that you will teach us to not be dispended, but press toward the mark of the high calling in Jesus Christ. Pray that you are blessed, the council, most special mayor, and his followers, and give us followership. We pray for the law enforcement officers, keep them safe. We pray for the judges and pray for our school district, keep our children safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. We pray that you will continue to lead us from one degree of grace to another. Lead us that we might be led and teach us that we may be taught. Bless us in our uprising, our downsetting, our labor, and our leisure, our laughter, and in our tears until that day we shall stand before Jesus where there is no sunset and no dawn in. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Jones. I would like to say a prayer to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you Reverend Jones. Item number three is the roll call. Ms. Israel.
Here.
Mr. Seitz.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Pacifica.
Here.
Mr. Gagels.
Here.
All members present. Item number four is consent agenda. Item number A is approval of the minutes of the workshop session of January 15th, 2015. Item number two is approval of the minutes of the regular session of January 15th, 2015.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Been moved and seconded to approve consent agenda items number A and B. Any discussion? If none will proceed to the vote, it is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. This consent agenda is approved. Item number five is ordinances and resolutions. Item A is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1128, revising the city park ordinance by adopting an ordinance for the operation of the city park pool and city sports complex. And soon as I find it, I'll read the caption. Anybody's got the page number? I got it here. It's on page 15 of the agenda packet. Ordinance number 15-1128 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, repealing and replacing ordinance number 1059, 1152, and 12-1052 of the Pleasanton Code of Ordinances, providing rules and regulations, setting fees, providing a penalty clause, providing a conflict clause, and providing an effective date for the operation of the city park, the city pool, and the city sports complex.
What are we doing? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to approve an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, repealing and replacing ordinances.
Read the, not the caption.
Okay. Correction. Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number 15-1128, revising the parks ordinance by adopting an ordinance for the operation of the city park, city pool, and city sports complex.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adopt an ordinance number 15-1128, revising the parks ordinance by adopting an ordinance for the operation of the city park, city pool, and city sports complex. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number B is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1129, establishing and amending the official city map of the City of Pleasanton, Texas. And ordinance number 15-1129 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, declaring and establishing an official city map by declaring the city corporate limits and the extraterritorial jurisdiction boundaries of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, amending and replacing all maps previously approved, providing for relief, providing for a savings clause, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor.
Ms. Israel.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-1129, establishing and amending the official city map of the City of Pleasanton, Texas.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1129, establishing and amending the official city map of the City of Pleasanton. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Mr. Gagels.
If I can. I have a question. Is this including the extension of the ETJ?
Yes.
The two mile radius?
It's in the, it's in the.
It's the green outline above the purple city limits.
One mile.
That's one mile. Yes, sir.
No discussion, will proceed to the vote. All those in favor of the ordinance, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item C is reading, first reading of ordinance number 15-1130, declaring new voting districts as a result of recent annexations. And ordinance number 15-1130 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, adopting district boundaries, repealing ordinances, and resolutions in conflict. First reading.
I have a question.
Mr. Gagels.
Has this been cleared through the judicial system and all of that?
It's been cleared through our city attorney. The changes to the map are in the middle of District 1 there, the incorporation of Bonita 2, which is a voluntary annexation. It's right in the middle of the district. Also, the remaining portion of the golf course property that was a voluntary annexation, which was on the extreme boundary of District 3, and the recent annexation on the west side of the city by the Council of Liberty, Eileen, and Hayden in that area. And after consultation with the city attorney, he recommended and he advised what the staff's recommendation was, and that was to include those areas, which are about 89 properties within District 6 at this time. I might add, you'll see some white areas in that portion. Those four properties had ag exemptions and they were offered non-annexation agreements and they all signed them, so that's why you see that white portion in the middle, not in the shade of purple.
So then this map is officially ready to be adopted at the next reading?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Garza.
What is the percentage of population with this?
At this time, we do not have those figures. There's 89 properties. There was approximately 78 or so homes on those properties. If you look at 2.7 or you examine the 2.7 per capita, per household as by the U.S. Census in 2010, then, you know, it brings you to a number times two.
In that particular district?
I don't have those numbers. The city secretary may have them, but I don't have those numbers. We don't have those numbers at this time. If you'd like us to bring them to the next meeting, we certainly would.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Move on to item D, which is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1131, ordering the general election to be held on May 9th, 2015. Ordinance number 15-1131 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, ordering the general election to be held on May 9th, 2015, for the purpose of electing the mayor, the council members for District 4, 5, and 6, establishing the time and place, and early voting, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 15-1131, ordering the general election to be held on May 9th, 2015.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1131, ordering the general election to be held on May 9th, 2015. There is no discussion, will proceed to the vote.
I have a question.
Mr. Gagels.
Okay. Okay. I finally got there. I thought I had read in here where each position that's up for reelection is for a two-year term.
That's what we have right now, is two-year terms.
Right. Okay. If it changes, if they go to two, three-year terms, how is that going to affect this ordinance? Or it's not?
They would have to be amended or have to have an ordinance to replace it. But as of now, we have to go by what we currently have and it's two-year.
Yeah, I found it says mayor, council member for District 4, 5, and 6, with each serving a two-year term. So if we adopt this ordinance and the three two-year term passes, then the council's going to have to amend.
Correct.
Amend the ordinance?
Have to either amend the ordinance or have an ordinance that would replace this one. But we can only go off of what we currently have and.
How about this ordinance is saying they're just elected for a two-year term? How can you change that?
By amending an ordinance, we've, we've done it, you know, not a whole lot of times, but we have amended ordinances.
Bobby, do you have an answer?
Mr. Maldonado, will you clarify that we can't amend an ordinance or have another ordinance that we repeal or replace an ordinance that's already in existence? Mr. Gagels was wondering, and I'll try to speak for you because I know your voice is weak. What he's asking is, in the ordinance that we're about to vote on, it's saying that there is two-year terms for those positions that the election will be held for in May. He's saying, what if there's a change to the city charter and changes it to some different amount, a number of years? How does that affect this? My answer was, we'll either amend this ordinance or replace or repeal it.
That's true, because we don't know what's yet to occur in the future. So you're right, it's whatever it is now, and if it changes, then we change the ordinance.
I mean, so then if this is approved and they're elected to two-year terms, it's a possibility they can have a three-year term?
If we're talking about a charter amendment, the answer would be yes.
So it can change between, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? If none will proceed to the vote, all those in favor of the ordinance, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number six is citizens' comments. If you're a citizen or a taxpayer to the City of Pleasanton, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes, know that it cannot be about an item on the agenda, and know that staff and council may not comment. And nobody signed up, so if there's none, we'll move on to number seven, departmental reports.
We have our public works director's report this evening, Mayor. Departmental report will be by the finance directors. We advised the council at the last meeting, we'll begin to give you a financial report at the end of each quarter. This will be a report by Mrs. Martinez for the ending first fiscal quarter, which was December 31st of 2014. All other reports are as submitted and we'll move to the manager's message and the mayor's message from that point.
Cut.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
All our water wells are at 100%. Our utilities department, utilities department crews began work on Cynthia Drive. They're replacing all the poly services with the copper tubing of the upcoming CIPs. On our water main project, Fonseca Construction began the first waterline bore at Yellowstone and Highway 476. They have bored 75 feet of 25, 24-inch casing and are waiting on the carrier pipe to be delivered tomorrow. Their next scheduled bore will be at the railroad crossing on McGuffin Road near the country club entrance. Landmark, the water tower contractor poured the tower foundation last week, and last night they completed the installation of that 80-foot tower, crane tower. This will now allow them to begin the construction and installation of the water tower's pedestal. Our wastewater plant crews are continuing to clean and tell us and troubleshoot the sewer line at Bryant and Goodwin. They discovered a manhole that wasn't there and was, was allowed, gave us the access, they were able to pinpoint the area needed, needing repairs. We estimated approximately a 60-foot point repair in the middle of the intersection of Goodwin and Bryant, which will require another lane closure. We're waiting on coordinating with Tex Don and that. The Parks Department continues the ground maintenance to all public buildings and ball fields. They have rehabbed the interior of all the ball fields at the sports complex. This consists of applying a field conditioner made up of topsoil clay for managing moisture, improving drainage, and keeping the surface safe and playable by resisting confection. Also, routine maintenance repairs to the play scape were also done, which consisted of mainly loose bolts and nut and bolt. Crews have also completed the restoration of the security lighting to the concession stand and restrooms at the sports complex. We're still waiting on prices for a man lift rental to install the backstop lighting at the River Park soccer field. Our street department completed several service orders and, as weather permitted, continues to work on a backlog of potholes, repairs. They have been working on resolving issues with the drainage culvert that crosses Humble Cat Road. The old concrete drain was, has deteriorated and come apart, so the crews have set a temporary steel plate over the crossing until we can, we're going to replace it with a 40-foot section of galvanized corrugated pipe.
Any questions? Mr. Weezer.
Mayor.
Ms. Israel.
Yeah, what portion of Bryant Street is that at?
On Bryant Street, right there, right there in the corner of Goodwin, towards Green Lawn, that little section between Green Lawn and Bryant on Goodwin.
Okay.
There'll be, there'll be a 60-foot repair that we're going to have to do from the corner over to that manhole that's right in the center of that intersection.
Well, at least I'll have a turning lane.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have a turning lane.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Mayor, council, I'm going to report to you the first quarter financial report for the City of Pleasanton. Since we're reporting from October to December, the, what's good is, considered good, is if revenue exceeds 25% and if expenditures are below 25%, because that gives you a profit. So we want to see a profit. So I consider ourselves doing well for the general fund. We're at 38.97% above our projected revenue. Our budget for general fund is $8,748,53194, and we've collected $3,49597, which gives us the 38.97. The expenditures, our budget is $8,72669894, and we've spent $1,71714361. We're at 20.36%. So again, we're above, I mean, we're below 25% in our expenditures and we're above 25% in our revenue. So if you, you'll look at the bottom, the bottom line is we're showing a profit so far. Of course, we're nonprofit, but I'm just saying that we have a surplus instead of a deficit of $1,632,47709. In the utility fund, we're below the 25% there in the revenue account. It's very difficult to project, based on our first quarter, what your revenue is going to be in utility fund, particularly since this has been a season full of rain. We've just had so much rain, so our revenue is down so far. You see that, you see that more in the summer months where the increases in the water revenue occur. So again, it's 21.58% in the utility fund in terms of revenue and 18.90% in the expenditures. We've held off on some expenditures, so, so far we're doing, we tend to be more conservative in our first quarter anyway, so we're doing very well in the utility fund. And I would like to thank Johnny Weezer and Chief Sanchez. They have the two largest departments and they always do well, so they do an exceptional job when it comes to budgeting as well as the other departments. But I'd like to particularly thank Johnny Weezer and Chief Sanchez. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. and Ms. Martinez?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Just a comment. I truly appreciate this snapshot. It really gives us a lot of valuable information and gives us, I think, just what we need to know. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Questions or comments for Ms. Martinez? Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Move on to item number eight, city manager's message.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I would just kind of like to piggyback on what Mrs. Martinez said. We can't thank all the departments enough, but when you have a good portion of the budget housed under the police department and the public works department, which includes streets, parks, water, and wastewater, those two gentlemen are plenely responsible for some of what you heard tonight, and I commend them as well. It's difficult to manage so many moving parts at once and keep your eye on the number one thing. It's all about being prudent with our citizens' funds. I commend them. Our message tonight starts with CIP planning. I'll just be a little bit redundant over what you're going to hear a little later, just to remind you, we issued $4 million in debt approximately 19 months ago to begin the street reconstruction and street rehabilitation program. It's been an all-encompassing project at this point with, with bore samples taken on some of the larger streets, waiting for the analysis of those bore samples and what kind of soil we have under those streets to come back, based on the fact that we were asking for three recommendations on how those streets could be reconstructed. You'll have a presentation from Mr. Medding and Mr. Cope with Klein and Cope Engineering tonight at the point where we're at, and that is to move to final design and, and to go to bid within the next 30 to 35 days. We have four recommended streets that'll be in front of you. Those streets really are encompassed based on several criteria. Number one, the condition of the roads, and number two, what kind of traffic travels on those roads and how important are they to all the citizens of the city? Thoroughfare, street, street traffic, school traffic, and so on. Also might mention, the CIP planning continues on the water utility project. Out in front of some of the things that Mr. Weezer said a few minutes ago, we continue to look at some of the things that are necessary to complete that project, the securing of several easements. Also, we've been analyzing the, the future pressures off of that system and some of the other areas of town, principally in the Crown Hill, Edge Hill area, everything back north of Bensdale, as well as the east portion of town around First Street and all of, all of the Old North Town City as we knew it. That includes everything from 4th through 8th, Rocket, Martin, all of those roads. This is in an effort to not only keep that line moving with fresh water, but also to continue to take the leverage off of Main Yard. Main Yard pumps about 65 to 70% of the production in the city. That will take a huge portion. It will also give us some redundancy we've never had, and that's in the portions of those areas of town I mentioned before. If something were to happen, it's a matter of adjusting some valves and continuing constant water service to our customers. We're also looking at some of the things we need to do to adjust those pressures in the, in reference to pressure-reducing valves, and also what we can do in case, for instance, North Town's well goes down. North Town is usually non-functional at that point and there's a lot of leverage on Main Yard. We're looking at electrically operated valve that would open, fill the tank at North Town at the same time the well comes on. That way, if the well ever goes down, we can keep the North Town pump station in the ground storage tank for the well. I commend Mr. Medding, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Cope, because this is an all-encompassing project, and not too often do you see a city our size take on something like this, let alone the major portion of the project be designed with folks in-house, as well as the folks that are going to put it in the ground in-house, and I commend everyone's efforts on that. Budget items and capital expenditures, I'll just mention a couple of things. We have a couple of more items that we want to put in front of council. There were two dump trucks that were in this year's budget. Mr. Weezer has taken the lead on that, and we're going to go out to bid fairly quickly. We're going to do, do a bid asking for some used dump trucks. Based on the fact these dump trucks don't run every day, they don't run constantly every day, we feel like we can save the citizens and save the city quite a bit of money in reference to some used vehicles, and we'll be going to bid on that. Obviously, the maps were in front of you this evening. I won't be redundant there. The financial reporting, Helen will continue to do that at the end of each quarter. This becomes an ever-important initiative for the administrative staff, as well as those who manage their budgets. With the decrease in oil prices, we're monitoring everything almost on a daily basis that anything that has to do with residual oil prices, there will be no doubt that we will have some impact. Right now, we're trying to gauge what that impact is, and we're trying to do what we need to do to be prudent with budget. Ordinances, I'll just mention that the ordinance that was directed by council, that a draft was placed in front of you all at the last meeting about sex offenders within a certain amount of feet of places where children gather. Mr. Maldonado has found some appellate court rulings that may call into conflict, some of the things we wanted to accomplish with that ordinance, but we will continue to look at those appellate court rulings and eating rulings that will come down in the near future and hopefully come back to council with the recommendation on where we should go with that ordinance. We just wanted to let you know we hadn't forgot about it. It's not, that's not why it's not on the agenda tonight, but with those appellate court rulings in front of us, we want to wait and see how. That's our message this evening, Mayor. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Pearson?
Yes, sir.
The ordinance, is that pretty much specific to the landlords? Is that the bid?
That's a portion of it, but I think if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Maldonado, the Fifth Circuit Court out of New Orleans ruled that sex offenders have a right to challenge any of these ordinances at this point, based on distances and landlords as well.
That's right, but what you're talking about, Mr. Best, you and I discussed that at the last meeting, and you had indicated that you were okay with just focusing on the sex offenders and not the landlords. So if we remove that language, we're good.
Okay.
I suggested to Mr. Pearson that, because you were the proponent of this ordinance, removing that language would make it an acceptable ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Item number nine, the only announcement I have is Mr. Wurkin resigned from the Housing Authority Board due to his commitment with the school board, but Ms. Julia Garcia, who's the director of the Coastal Bend College Pleasanton Campus, has agreed to fill his spot, so I'll get with you all tomorrow on, on getting that done. Item 10 is report on the Atlas Coast County Appraisal District by the city representative, Mr. Larry Pippen.
Good evening, mayor and council. Cindy, manager, and your staff. Thank you for appointing me to this great position. I'm, I'm going to enjoy it. So far, at my first meeting, it was quite intriguing. Looking forward to the balance of it. But I was given no guidance by the city council about what do you want me to look for, or what do you want me to do? Send in for me about the semi-monthly reports which will be given to you. I think I gave you five different reports to look at. Is this satisfactory by you, Mayor, and the council? Do you want me to delete that and just give you the appraisers' report, the copy of the minutes, and anything else you wish for me to do?
That's a good point. We haven't really given you any kind of specific tasks, so, I don't know, I kind of like seeing it. I don't know if that's, if it's hard for you to compile that, if it's not, I wouldn't mind seeing it. Council, thoughts?
I prefer it.
Mayor, yeah, I've got a couple of things that I would just, like, I love seeing the reports. I think that's awesome. I'm really appreciative of them. Anything that, that you feel is interest to the council and to the citizens of Pleasanton and the city itself during meetings, I would like you just to report to us on those things. And there are questions that we may have that we would like to bring to you, to have you bring to the board and have discussion about. And I think, I'm not real sure to the extent that that was done in the past, but I would like to be able to have the ability to have either Cindy send you questions, and then you can get with me or any of the other members, and that way we know that our questions will be taken care of.
I'd be more glad to do so.
Thank you.
I do understand that through, through the past, that there was times that your representatives failed to do some of the things that the past council wished for them to do. I will do my best to honor that. I'm here to serve the people of Pleasanton as well as you, and I'm here for your request, but I'd like to hold one privilege that, that say I disagree with one of the items that you might want us to change. If I will allow, be allowed to give you my comments about why I wish to vote a certain way, and then if you still disagree, then I can assure you I will vote the way of this council, because you appointed me and I'm here to serve you and the citizens, so.
Sounds fair to me.
Sounds very fair. I appreciate it.
I appreciate those being in the packet, because also whoever gets a packet gets the same information that we do, so it's helpful.
I will, I did create a slight commotion. I did have questions about why the board is only meeting every other month. I feel that we need to meet monthly in order to do an excellent job for the citizens. I think we need to do it monthly, where I can keep this council informed on a monthly basis, not come up here every two or three months and give you a report. I don't think that's justifiable to the citizens. I don't know if I'm going to be successful.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Pippen? Thank you, Mr. Pippen.
Thank you very much.
Item number eleven is a presentation and discussion by ComZoom. It's by Mr. Bob Cohen, the CEO.
Mayor, I'd just like to say a few comments about ComZoom and Mr. Cohen. His biography is in you all's packet. I won't be redundant with every bit of it, but basically Bob's going to tell you all tonight that Pleasanton is his top priority and his company's top priority. He is bringing a utility to the city of Pleasanton that we have not had before. It'll put us on par with many other communities in South Texas. To give you a little bit of background on Bob, he's a thirty-five-year-plus media industry veteran. He has an extensive background in media, sports, and entertainment. He spent twenty-three years with Clear Channel Communications. When he left there, he was the chief executive officer of the International Radio Division, which managed two-hundred-and-forty stations with a three-hundred-million-dollar revenue item every year. Bob's a native San Antonio, native South Texan. Some of those radio stations that were involved locally were, as we all know, twelve-hundred W O A I, Ticket seven-sixty, and Country Litter, KJ ninety-seven. It's one thing to be a professional, but it's another thing to be recognized by the members of the community. He's been the past chairman of Valero Alamo Bowl, still serves on the Athletics Advisory Council with U T S A, and he's a lifetime board member of the Valero Texas Open. I could go on and on here. Needless to say, Bob's a real professional. He understands it, and this is a very exciting time for our community. He and his investors and his partners have bought and have systems that they now own in Laverne, Castervil, Hondo, Lidl, Natalia, Divine, Corn City, Kennedy, Pleasanton, Three Rivers, Goliad, Comfort, and Bandera. And Pleasanton will be the first. And without anything else, Bob, we're glad to hear tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for the introduction. I really appreciate you all having me on your agenda tonight. As Mr. Pearson said, we, our company has made an investment in some cable and broadband assets in South Texas, and so I gladly accepted the invitation by Mr. Pearson to come and visit with you all tonight and tell you a little bit about what our plans are, to try and answer the question of who are these people and what are they going to do here in Pleasanton. So I will try and get through a very brief PowerPoint presentation and comment on the notes that are on there and certainly available for questions. Let's try and get this going right. Our company is called ComZoom. It's a unique name, obviously. Hopefully, the name conveys speed. That's what we were after there. Let me also say how difficult it is to come up with a really literal name, so we really wanted to go with a unique name, and we fought long and hard to come up with a good one. But we are a newly formed telecommunications provider, and our three lines of business are ultra-high-speed internet broadband service, fully digital high-definition cable TV, and voice-over-internet protocol phone service, which is internet phone, basically. As Mr. Pearson said, we are in thirteen markets in South Texas. We are operating a legacy plant at the moment, and we have two thousand subscribers across our systems. Our corporate offices are in San Antonio, and we are all, all of our management team is from San Antonio. Every single one of our investors and board members, with the exception of two, are from San Antonio. The one that, we have one that lives in Austin, and one board member, one of our leading board members, lived in San Antonio for thirty years until he got married and moved to Dallas, but he also happens to be the lead director of Rack Space since its inception. So we thought that'd be a good thing to keep him on, have him on our board. But we're, that is a little profile about people in our company, and let me tell you how we formed. Our company formed basically with three acquisitions. Reach Broadband, which some of you may have heard of, operated here in Pleasanton for, I think, about a half a dozen years. We acquired ten of their South Texas markets. They also operate in other parts of the state, but they had a footprint here in South Texas, and we acquired those assets. Those are, those are all hundred percent aerial assets on phone, you know, cable, coaxial cable between phone poles in these communities. And at the moment, offering a limited amount of broadband and also a limited amount of cable television, forty channels of analog cable. The second acquisition we made was a bankrupt company out of East Texas, which had three markets, or at least one market we were interested in in our area, Bandera, and along with that came Lake Hills, which is on the north shore of Medina Lake, or what was Medina Lake and now Medina Canyon, and then also Little Charlotte down there, south of Jordantown. Those two markets we're going to park for a while. But Bandera is obviously, that was another market we wanted to get. And we added those markets to two markets that my partners had acquired before I even got involved with them. They, we bought a mom-and-pop operation out of Comfort and out of Laverne from a family there and had been idling along with those, particularly in Laverne, but in Comfort, we added some subscribers. And with the three of those acquisitions, that's what, that's how we get to fifteen markets, but it's thirteen, we're only counting thirteen, as I said. I hope you can see this. As Mr. Pearson said, we're in South Texas, and as you can see on the map here, it's really more or less an eleven o'clock to four o'clock profile on the map. If you go around, you can see our market in Comfort, Bandera, all the way around. Our furthest most markets are Three Rivers and Goliad, but, and you can see by the color coding on the legend on the right, we have video operations. This is presently, this is legacy service, video operations in those seven markets, video and some internet in the four in yellow, including Pleasanton, and then video, internet, and some in Castervil and Hondo, and then, of course, our future services, as I told you a moment ago, in Lake Hills and Charlotte, it's sort of there on the bottom. And of course, you'll notice the asterisk there on Pleasanton, Pleasanton Market is first cab off the rank, as they say, to be upgraded, and I'll tell you a little bit about our plans. What does upgraded mean? And what it means is that we are doing a full system-wide technology upgrade to an IP internet delivery technology, a high-speed hybrid fiber coaxial infrastructure. When we get that infrastructure in place and upgraded, we'll be able to deliver up to five-hundred megabits of capacity into the neighborhoods and up to a gigabit into business districts. When we do that upgrade, we'll also have the ability to deliver over two-hundred, or approximately about two-hundred, a little more than that, video channels, music channels, premium channels, et cetera. As I said earlier, in our legacy service here, we're only able to deliver about forty channels of analog. Reach Broadband was, had operated that system for a while in absentee ownership out of Colorado and East Texas. We do plan on boosting that to a couple hundred channels, and maybe the most exciting thing about all those channels is one that you wouldn't think would be, is not coming from a national network, where we do plan on doing a local origination channel. What that'll be is a channel which will be for this community. As you all well know, there's not that many local radio stations in these markets anymore. What ones there were have now turned into San Antonio, they're part of San Antonio clusters, et cetera. What we want to do with this channel is really make it yours, have a place for high school football games to be carried, for school plays, for a council meeting such as this, for speaking engagements, you name it. Even when something like the Cowboy Homecoming is going on, why not have the organizers in there for a quick interview with somebody, maybe someone from here, maybe somebody from our staff, but a real local outlet for you all to get the word out, school closures, road closures. Really, it's wide open to our creativity and your creativity. I've had an interesting conversation with several of the superintendents from independent school districts around the area, including Dr. Kleinsmith, and one of the first things that we talked about was the vocational and career training opportunity that this could provide. Imagine some of the kids in your school district having a chance, if they have, if they want to, to go and broadcast a football game and see it on the air, actually on the air and not just on a YouTube channel. We're excited about those kind of opportunities, and that doesn't obviously have to be just football, maybe basketball, volleyball, school play, anything. So we're really excited about that. It's a rough draft at the moment, and I'm sure each community's going to do it a little bit differently, but we're real excited about providing that kind of service. We talked about the VoIP internet phone. This is just phone over the internet, which provides, which is going to provide you with unlimited domestic long distance, so everything in the lower forty-eight, you want to call somebody in Vermont, he dials and it rings on their end, just like a, just like a normal phone would. That's internet phone. And then, of course, there's a little money in it for you, because we're a cable, we're a cable operation, the state-issued certificate of franchise authority grants you five percent of our gross video revenues, which are, I think, paid out on a quarterly basis. I think that's right, but that's the other little, that's the other little item that is important to recognize. So I want to talk a little bit about the pipe business, and you guys have heard a lot of things about the pipe business in the last few years, but really, we're talking tonight about a different kind of pipe. And I want to talk a little bit about internet connectivity and give you a glimpse, a really quick glimpse of what the future holds and what the situation is worldwide right now, but particularly in our country. You've all heard of Cisco. It's a network management company, big international global company. They project that there will be fifty billion connected devices worldwide in the next five years. But if you think about it, and this is not a stretch, that's an average, there's an average at the moment of between five and nine connected devices in everybody's home. Think about your own situation. When you really total it up, there's a lot of internet-connected devices in your homes, and all of those devices run on bandwidth, and there's a lot of demand on that bandwidth, particularly in certain times of the day, whether you're residential, whether you're at your home or in a business. But there takes a bandwidth, it takes a pipe, and we want to be that pipe for this community and others. And what is, what is it that's driving the consumption of this bandwidth? Well, this is all happening very quickly, and a lot of it's out of our control. Just look at these logos up here. You recognize them, Netflix, Hulu, Amazon TV, Skype, YouTube. These are programming sources, these are, these are services that we don't control, you don't control, but are out there, and people are downloading them, and it puts an enormous demand on internet bandwidth. From them. Think about Google for a moment. I know you all, these are, the previous services are called over-the-top services, but you've heard about Google, and you've heard that Google is putting fiber into certain markets across the U.S. They're in Kansas City, they're in Provo, Utah, they're going into Austin. They are not doing that just for fun. They're doing that because they know that the next generation of devices and services is coming right behind them, and they want to be the infrastructure that powers all of that. That's why they're wiring up markets like that with fiber. So this is not a trend that's going to go backward. This is all on a northward trajectory, and there will be more and more devices and services that require bandwidth. And internet now, as you know, is really no longer a ceiling, it's a floor, it's a price of entry, it's the ante-up, it's what you have to have. To me, this is what's important for communities like Pleasanton and others, is it is an important part of your economic development. I know that Mr. Pearson and other economic development folks and city officials from all of these communities, if a business is thinking about coming to Pleasanton, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be too far down the list that a question that you're going to get is, what's your internet situation? You got to have it, and if you can't answer that question, there's another city next door that can. And this is, this is the thing I'm most excited about. We're a broadband-centric company, and we're going to be able to provide a pipe in this community that's going to be able to equip you and level that playing field a little bit with the other communities in the area and provide you that important component of economic development. Certainly a quality of life issue. We all know how important internet connectivity is to us every day now. It's just a part of our fabric. You got to have it. The multitude of connected devices I told you about, that's not going backwards. The future, think about the future of work. You can work now from wherever you like, provided you've got that bandwidth infrastructure, you've got the internet infrastructure. I look at markets like Pleasanton and some of the others that we're involved with as this is going to be something that's going to help you retain professionals that don't want to live in San Antonio but might need to work there, but they can, they can work from here. It's part of our future. We talked, I talked about the meeting I had with Dr. Kleinsmith. I think it's important to understand that most of these school districts have made arrangements to get the bandwidth they need in these communities to their schools, but what happens when the kids go home? My son doesn't do any homework right at the moment without a computer in front of him or an iPad in front of him, so we need to be able to provide that capability in people's homes as well. This is going to transform our ability to educate our kids now and in the future. Telehealth, telemedicine, clinical support from big markets like San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, et cetera. If you've got the bandwidth, people can get medical services that they'd otherwise have to travel forty-five minutes or longer in traffic to the medical center in San Antonio now to get. The amount, the number of changes that we're going to experience in the next five years to television is going to, is going to blow away what we've seen in the last two decades, two, three decades, and this is, this is happening with cord shaving, cord cutting, cord trimming, whatever you want to call it. We're going to see a heck of a lot of changes to the way people consume television and entertainment. And I want to mention one other thing. This sounds a little far-fetched, but if you've ever heard of something called the autonomous car, the future generation of cars, and it's not that far ahead of us, is you're going to pull into your driveway or your garage, and your car is going to receive, needs to be able to receive an update to its computer system in order to run properly. And if you think that's far-fetched, think about, you've all heard about a Tesla. That's what a Tesla is. I've been in a Tesla. It's a computer, and they don't, you don't take it to get tuned up. You download software, and that's where things are going.
Oh, gosh.
So let's talk about Pleasanton and the Pleasanton timeline. We have a lot of work to do, and as Mr. Pearson said, it's our, it's our first market, and we are excited about what we want to do here, and we've got a lot of work to get there, but we're moving along with it. Here are the steps that we have to take. We're going to do this in phases. It's going to be easier for us to be, get up with data and internet service first before we get to video. Pleasanton happens to be one of the markets that had a little bit of infrastructure when we acquired it, so we are going to take advantage of the fact that there's been a little investment here already and plug in the things we need to take it to the upgrade level, which includes putting in what's called a C N T S here in this market. We expect that that'll happen late first quarter, late March of this year, and what that'll do is take the existing subscribers that we have in Pleasanton at the moment, and they'll see an immediate change in what they can do with their internet. That'll take a little pressure off of our system. We're redlining it right now. We're pushing it to the limits. Once we get that C N T S in place, performance will improve on the existing system.
And what does that, what does C N T S mean?
It stands for a Cable Mode and Termination System. It's a, it's a piece of equipment, and it's a, it's a, it's a important installation, and it opens up, it opens up the capacity of the lines.
Okay, thank you.
New fiber circuit has to be put in place between here and, and San Antonio. When that happens, speeds will increase from a maximum of twelve megabits per second, which is what we can deliver right now, to individual stuff, a hundred megabits per second, as soon as we get that in place. We'll take all of our, all of our internet activity, all of our television activity into one central head-in facility in San Antonio that we're building out now, send it down on long-haul fiber that's already buried in the ground. Those circuits are already negotiated, it just takes a while to get them installed, and that will happen, be completed hopefully by the end of May of this year. Then, you may have seen a little location that we acquired over there on Encino, next to Coastal Bend College. We have a little building there. We acquired two buildings, one here and one in Hondo. I have the architectural drawings in my briefcase right now that I just got from the architect today. We will gut that, it has good bones, but we're going to gut it out and make it a nice retail shop for people to come and pick up their equipment and pay the bill, and there will also be technical people there, which people can access to ask questions and figure out how to, how to work all this stuff. And then, we want that facility staffed by somebody from here, so it'll be hopefully a friendly face that you recognize, Manning our retail shop there on Encino. The video service is the next phase. That takes a little longer. First thing we got to do is build up our infrastructure in San Antonio. We've got ten thousand square feet in our corporate office. Part of that's going to be for the central head-in facility. Instead of having all those dishes that you see out of Encino now, we'll have one big dish or two big dishes in San Antonio, pulling all that information down, sending it out on IP on the long-haul fiber out to all of our communities, including Pleasanton. Takes a while to build that out. We're working on it now. FedEx knows us all by first name, and they bring new equipment every day. So we will be ready for our video service, which I talked about by the middle of this year, but up until then, we still have our existing service, which is forty channels of analog cable, which isn't great, but it's all we've got, and we'll continue to service that. And the other component And, and the, the other component is that we have the ability to also expand our footprint. And, and that is a part of our plan here as well, we wanna try and broaden our, our coverage as much as we can, and I wanna, I wanna give you an idea of what that looks like. You will see, you will see our trucks and our installers around town doing the following thing to, to not only our plant, but any future plant we have. Now, we have nothing to do with Discount Low Voltage, eight-eight-eight-seven-nine-seven-three-six-nine-seven, they just had a nice YouTube video, which was pretty descriptive, and so I decided to borrow it. So, hopefully, this is gonna work, to give you an idea. Go ahead, Andres, if you wanna get that. As you can see, it looks like a giant oatmeal box, aluminum oatmeal box, and they just pull it down, those cable lines between the poles, and while it's going down, it's wrapping a piece of fishing line, heavy-duty fishing line, which is fiber, the signal goes to those, those fiber strands as light signals, and we wrap it around the infrastructure of the coaxial cable. That's why we call it a hybrid fiber coax infrastructure. We have the aerial placement, it, the, the fiber needs support, it wraps around our existing cable plant. And then, that will occur in, in, we already have fiber in a lot of this market, but that will occur in places where we need to fortify, and that's the other thing that we'll be doing in, in areas where we don't presently have coverage. And, and there will be a lot of that, hopefully, in, in the coming months. So, that's just, uh, that's just a little update of what, what our plans are, what our vision is. We have a website, it's not very good yet, it's just, it's just a landing page, I'm busy working on getting those pages out and updated. The one thing that is on there is a place for people to go and sign their names and get on a mailing list, so we can see the paper easily, and do email blasts. We're on Facebook, we're on Twitter, we're getting a lot of buzz, even though we've done no marketing at all, it's happening with word of mouth, and, and we will begin aggressively marketing once we have service to promote, we don't wanna really do too much promotion of what we have at the moment, but we will, we will gear. So, planning on seeing me around town a lot, we, we're gonna be very visible and putting a lot of shoe leather on the ground and visiting folks, being involved in city events, being involved in, in speaking to Lions Clubs and Rotary Clubs and Kiwanis Clubs and, and you name it. We just, we wanna be active in the community, we wanna be some, a service that you're proud of, we wanna be an asset to the community, we wanna help you level the playing field and be something you're proud of, that you can talk about with confidence, and we, you know, we certainly want input from you, we wanna listen to what your needs are, both as, from a commercial play as well as residential, and trying to deliver everything, everything and more that you want. It's a fast-moving industry, it's unbelievable technology, what an exciting time we're living in right now, and we're just excited to be able to, to look ahead and see what this is all gonna look like, a, a few months, years from now.
Is there a, is there an opportunity maybe to do like a free city Wi-Fi? Uh, you know, like I know San Antonio has SA Free Wi-Fi, is there an opportunity for us to do something like that?
Sure, we can talk about that, there's places, we, we've, we've had those internal conversations that that's a service we'd like to be able to, to work with the cities and, and plan out, like in city parks and what have you. I, I think that there's a, when it comes to city events, we, we wanna be able to light those areas and, and as part, as, as a way to sponsor certain events and be involved, and absolutely, there's, there's certain ways to talk about that, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have an idea of, or do you have an idea of what, could you give us an idea of what the pricing's gonna be?
For the idea you just mentioned, or?
No, no, for, for, you know, like a residence or?
Oh, sure, sure. Well, um, we are in the process of tightening that down now, I will say this, that the, for example, and I'll give you a couple of rough data points for you. As a, in a residential, in a residential model, right now, I believe that our, our system here would cost about, to deliver twelve megabits of download speed, all in, probably around seventy dollars, plus taxes and fees, that same amount of money will deliver as much as twenty-five megabits of download speed, in other words, at least double, up to more than, you know, even closer to, even closer to fifty megabits per second download speed. So, we're tightening all that down, so basically, basically what we're talking about as we work through this, that's residential pricing, commercial will be a little bit different, but the prices will be similar to what Reach has been charging, but, but the delivery for that price is gonna be quite a bit more, as well as the up, the, the headroom options that you have. We'll be able to go far beyond that and deliver, deliver download speeds and performance that goes way beyond that, and obviously costs more, but, but these are options that don't exist in this market at the moment.
Right. And at seventies for the equipment, what would an idea of a monthly charge be for?
For like a modem?
Uh, well, no, you said the equipment was around seventy dollars to deliver?
No, no, that's, that's, that's the service. That's a service amount, that you'd be paying for, you'd pay for a modem and a, and a cable set top box, it depends on how many boxes you have and, and that sort of thing, those are, that's part of the, part of the monthly bill.
Okay.
So, tho- those are, those are rough, we're still working on tightening all those down, but, you know, we wanna make it something that's affordable, we wanna make it something that's, that's, you know, uh, market-based and, and cover our costs and, uh, plugged into a, a model we have, but I think you'll, I think you'll be pleased that the, if you are a Reach subscriber, or former Reach subscriber at the moment, the amount of money, the approximate amount of your money you're paying is gonna deliver you a heck of a, heck of a lot more than you're getting now, and then there'll be additional options beyond that, that you can, that you can do to get your house lit up.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
For those that know me, they, y'all know I'm like a kid in candy store at the moment. To get some comparison on this, probably one of the major providers right now charges maybe around fifty, five dollars a month for six megabytes per second. So, you know, if he's running around seventy, and you say it's gonna be near twenty-five, or more or less?
More or less.
Yeah, that, that is zooming. Comzoom's a great name. Uh, I, my opinion, I mean, I, I actually work from home, I teach online, I, I, we, we do a lot of things, I, I teach at over two thousand universities worldwide, so it's, it's my thing. And, uh, to me, this right behind the oil will be one of the most important changes, movements that this city has had, right, right past the oil boom, 'cause this opens the door for every big business, or any business that wants to come here, anything that was holding them back before, th- this is huge, this is really beautiful, I'm very happy. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Colm?
Mayor, I have one question, one thing we get all the time, Bob, how many channels?
Right, um, well, I've, I've just, we've been working like crazy on that, it's a heck, heck of a lot more complex than, than you'd think it is, and frankly, video is under a lot of pressure, I'll get, I'll answer your question directly, Bruce, but, uh, video's under a lot of pressure from the programmers. When you read in the newspaper that the NBA has gotten a billion dollars for its rights fees, don't, you have to understand that that goes all the way down to you and I when we're paying for our cable bill. So, there's a lot of pressure from the programmers on those margins. Um, it's still a good business, but that's why you're seeing services like Netflix and Hulu and so forth, those, those folks are on the rise because people are cord shaving, cord cutting, and it's, it's difficult. But we are in the process of trying to figure out what the right satellite combinations are in terms of transponders, which channels we wanna bring down. We believe that our, our basic lineup, our expanded basic lineup, which is the step between Lifeline, which is just the San Antonio broadcast channels, Weather Channel, WGN, um, a religious channel, KLRN, et cetera, the, the, the basic package will have a hundred channels in it, and then you can add on your premiums, your, your Showtimes, your HBOs, et cetera, et cetera. And then there'll be another tier, a digital tier, there'll be a Hispanic tier, there'll be a sports tier, to where you take it up to, and also, that's a, that's video channels, and there'll be another forty or fifty music channels, and then on up beyond that, to, we think we're gonna be operating, at least in the near term, with a couple hundred channels, including video and premiums and music channels.
I, I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. Best said. We have been fortunate in Pleasanton to not be able to refuse or lose anybody in, in an economic development environment who has sat down with us, but there have been those who have voiced their concerns. Most recently, a restaurant that is a statewide chain and open, actually told the chief and I when we went to visit them and congratulate them on their opening, we almost didn't think we could make it in Pleasanton because we could not get what we needed to get to our headquarters to operate our software, but we were able to get it, it's slow, but we are pleased to get it, and I agree, uh, uh, not only just, you know, the restaurants, the hotel, but major industry, major commercial development will now have that avenue to come to Pleasanton and not only be, not only survive, but be connected to the outside world. And I thank you for coming, Bob.
Any other question? Yes, sir.
Oh, is this just gonna be in our city limits, or is it gonna be spread out, or how do y'all plan on doing that?
Well, we're gonna go out as far as we can, you know, we get down to, almost to Jordantown, that's another, that's another area, uh, it's not, it, it, there, there are systems over there which are, which are?
Will y'all cover like the new companies that are in now?
Yes, sir. I mean, I, I couldn't sit here and tell you exactly what the map looks like, but we're gonna cover the, we're gonna cover the city proper and then go beyond that, and it, as I said earlier, we've spoken in the last, this week, we've spoken to some folks who are, uh, working in, in, in developing property here and developing residences and so forth, that are a little bit outside of our plant. For example, we go down ninety-seven to about where that Super Eight Hotel is, but in the last couple of weeks, I've talked to a few businesses that are beyond that, we intend to, to string it all the way down.
We have a lot of people that are?
Right.
Beyond.
Right. Again, I don't have, I don't have a good enough handle on exactly where the plant ends, but I know that Pleasanton is the kind of market that we think will start, will build center out, and we'll go out to where the, where the demand is, as best we can, and as quick as we can. And like I said, the, you know, the pricing information, certainly expected that question, we are, you know, give us the, give us the elbow room to, to tweak here and there, but, you know, we're sort of in that range that I, I told you about, we gotta do a little bit more work, particularly on the video side, because there are some complex calculations we have to do with each and every network. And folks like ESPN, Discovery, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, they, they take their pound of flesh, that's why they can pay the NBA a million dollars and pay the NFL all their money in the Major League Baseball. So, we gotta sort all that out, make sure it's, that we price intelligently, deliver a great service, and, uh, you know, we're capitalists too, so we have to, we have to do that. But I think you'll be really pleased with the amount of bandwidth and the amount of date, internet speed we'll be able to bring in here, and, and at an affordable cost, and also the, the limits to which we can go that you can't do now. And of course, and there'll be a, there'll be a, two kinds of pricing structures, there'll be a residential and a commercial.
Mayor?
Ms. Sisral.
Thank you.
All right, just slide in there for a second. Um, I'm very interested in, um, hearing that there is a smaller possible market package for residential, um, like you were saying about the hundred channels. Uh, that's something that certainly interests me because I don't want four hundred and five, six hundred channels, and I am one of those who has cut the cord with Blu-ray and, uh, using Amazon and Netflix and Hulu in order to, uh, finally try to slow down the monster that AT&amp;T is, um, because they just continue to expand whether you want it or not, and then you're stuck in a place of getting shoved with it. The one package they don't ever offer is a smaller package for, for residential that wants definite bandwidth, wants internet, wants that, but they don't want, uh, they're no longer, you know, totally keyed up into being a rack space or, or anyone else like that. So, having a package that's just more of a residential package rather than somebody who's extreme is really something that's important, and it sounds like you're focusing on that, and I'm really happy with that. Local channels plus a few is something that everybody would be buying up around here.
Well, that's good to hear, and like I said, that, that, Mr. Mayor, when you asked about the pricing question, I wanna be clear, that the price range that I was giving you was for data, internet, the, uh, the video packages are still, we're still working through all that, and we'll, we'll promote that as soon as we, as soon as we're ready, which won't be long. Any other questions?
Other questions, Mr. Colm?
Thank you, very much.
But I just wanna dance.
I will say this, you, in Pleasanton, Texas, you will have more internet speed than I can get in San Antonio, by a lot, in my home. Thank you, Bob.
Item number eleven, discussion action to declare surplus fire department equipment. Chief Garris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, coming for you tonight, see if we can declare some old hose that we have as outdated surplus equipment. In years past, we just donated that stuff, that equipment, but now the procedure, we have to do it this way, this, this, that procedure. Uh, the Texas Constitution, I believe it's I, section I fifty-two, gives municipalities the, the law to do this, so that's why I'm for you tonight.
Okay.
Uh, Texas Commission on Fire Protection, the TCFP, sets the useful fire hose date as nineteen eighty-seven. The Pleasant Fire Department presently has two thousand feet of two-and-a-half and three-inch fire hose, along with eight hundred feet of inch-and-three-quarter fire hose that has passed its useful date. We would like the council to declare this hose as surplus or outdated equipment, and once this is done, we'll be able to donate this fire hose to the Texas Forest Service Helping Hands Program for distribution to the Leaming and Rossville Fire Departments. And, uh, you have two, uh, options, either declare it as, uh, surplus and outdated equipment, or not to declare it. And our recommendation is we do declare it as outdated equipment, 'cause the department can't use it anymore, 'cause we're under a TCFP now, and they say we can't use hose older than nineteen eighty-seven, so.
Mayor?
Ms. Sisral.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, under the Texas Constitution, Article Three, Section Five, Two-One, or Five-Two-I, we declare the two thousand foot of two-and-one-half-inch and three-inch fire hose, along with a one-and-three-quarter-inch fire hose as surplus and outdated equipment.
Second?
Second, under the Texas Article Three, Section Fifty-Two-I, declare the two thousand foot of two-and-a-half-inch and three-inch fire hose, along with the one-and-three-quarter, uh, fire hose as surplus and outdated equipment. Any discussion? None proceeded, the vote is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, post same sign, motion carries. Sir. Item number?
Good item.
Oh, go ahead. Item number thirteen is discussion action to direct the city staff to donate surplus fire department equipment, fire hose, to Texas Forest Service for designation to the Leaming and Rossville Volunteer Fire Departments.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, at, at the present time, the Pleasant Fire Department has?
Uh, Mr. Pacific?
I was just going to make the motion.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, direct the city staff to donate the two thousand of, two thousand feet of two-and-a-half-inch and three-inch hose, along with eight, eight hundred feet of one-and-three-quarters-inch surplus and outdated fire hose to, to the Texas Forestry Service Helping Hands Program, which will distribute the hose out to the Leaming and Rossville Volunteer Fire Department.
Taken. Been moved and seconded, direct city staff to donate two thousand feet of two-and-a-half-inch and three-inch hose, along with eight hundred feet of inch-and-three-quarters surplus and outdated fire hose to the Texas Forest Service Helping Hands Program, which will be distributed, which will distribute the hose out to the Leaming and Rossville Volunteer Fire Departments. Any discussion? None proceeded, the vote is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Very much, I just wanna let you all know, we replaced some of that hose already, so we're not gonna be shorthanded.
Okay. Discussion action to continue, the, or, item number fourteen, discussion action to continue to use the financial services of Mark McClainy, now with Samco Capital Markets, Inc.
Mayor, this is a business item, Mr. McClainy and his complete staff has left Southwest Securities to move over to Samco. Uh, Mr. McClainy and his staff has served this city long, and they've been very dedicated to this city in their financial advising of the city. The city staff has a great working relationship with Mr. McClainy, as do the council, and high praises for his service professionalism, and most of all of his accessibility. You have your options in front of you tonight, staff recommendation is to direct city staff to enter into an agreement with Mr. Mark McClainy and Samco to be the city of Pleasanton's financial advising firm and direct Southwest Securities to transfer all of the city's of Pleasanton's document files to Samco.
Mayor?
Sisral.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to enter into an agreement with Mr. Mark McClainy and Samco to be the city of Pleasanton's financial advising firm and direct Southwest Securities to transfer all of the city of Pleasanton's documents and files to Samco.
Taken. Been seconded, direct city staff to enter an agreement with Mr. Mark McClainy and Samco to be the city's financial advising firm and direct Southwest Securities to transfer all of the city of Pleasanton's documents and files to Samco. Any discussion? None proceeded, the vote is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, post same sign, motion carries. Item number fifteen is discussion action of purchase, Cronos electronic payroll and timekeeping system, our finance director, Ms. Martinez. We had a pretty, pretty healthy description from you of what it was, so unless anybody didn't read it.
Right.
I think you can go kinda, you know, just briefly over it and then hear what your recommendation is.
Okay. Well, basically, you read it, and I would like for Maria to elaborate on the process that she goes through every two weeks to process payroll, basically.
Sure, that would be helpful.
Currently, right now, every department has to submit timesheets, and I have to manually calculate it out to make sure that they calculated, did all their calculations right. I have to make sure they physically worked 40 hours before they can get overtime. Then I have to manually input all that data into the system. It takes me like a full eight hours of, before payroll's done. But that's not even the department getting together, their timesheets. It's a lot of work. Even the leave forms, like every year, just gets bigger, just paper that they have to submit that they want this day off, and then I have to say, yes, you have the time. Then it goes to their department head. So it's, it's a lot of man-hours right now.
And what I'm understanding is, just so everybody knows, in case you haven't looked at the packet, what they're, what they're suggesting is it's like thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars?
Right.
But the annual savings would be close to 240-something thousand dollars, correct?
Right. At 2% of the workforce, if you calculate it at 2%, it's 217,117 dollars. At two and a half percent, it's 250,809.
So we'll make our money back.
Mayor?
And Ms. Sisral.
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation to direct the staff to purchase the Cronos workforce-ready hardware and software to realize the savings in processing payroll in the amount of 183,661 dollars and 26 cents, calculated at 2% of the workforce, and 217,353 dollars and 60 cents, if calculated at 2.5% for the quoted price of 33,455 dollars and 60 cents.
Before we, before we, well...
I'm sorry.
You caught me. Could I get you to remove, I'd like to make a recommendation?
Yes.
And would you, would you still maintain your second, with that being removed?
Yes.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to direct city staff to purchase Cronos workforce-ready hardware and software to realize the savings in processing payroll in the amount of 183,661 dollars and 26 cents, if calculated at 2% of the workforce, and 217,353 dollars and 60 cents, calculated at 2.5% quoted up to 33,455 dollars and 60 cents. Any discussion? None proceeded. The vote is in favor of the motion. Uh, Mr. Gago.
I'm sorry. I was trying to get to that page. Okay. I have a couple of questions. Where will these time machines be?
Okay.
And my second question is, are they gonna be able to clock in off of their cell phone?
Yes.
So if I'm running late, I still have 15 minutes to get to work, I can clock when I'm pulling out of my driveway?
Well, I think that's something that...
How's that gonna work?
We, as management, have to discuss. We haven't really discussed all those particulars. As far as the time clocks, there's gonna be one, there's gonna be six of them. There's gonna be one here at City Hall, Museum, Civic Center. Fire Department will clock in at the Civic Center, PD...
Museum.
Museum. And it'll be a biometric model, meaning they'll put their thumb there. It'll also be, though, you have access to an app on the phone. And again, we're gonna have to learn all the mechanics of that, too, and how we handle each, each situation.
I think it's a great idea, but to clock in on your, your cell phone...
That, that will be a feature we'll look into later, Mr. Gago. Right now, we wanna get the basic system up and running, which, which has to do with cutting the 55 hours every two weeks for staff to process timesheets and leave forms. And the biometric thumbprint will not be allowed, will not allow anybody to clock in for anybody except that person. There's all kinds of other variables, but they will program the system based on the custom program we need, based on the personnel and how they work. There's all kinds of differences between what's considered overtime for police and fire, as other personnel. So all that'll be custom programmed. A lot of this other thing, especially what you just mentioned, will be considered at a later time.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the other thing that's not included in here, there, if y'all are interested, Ian from, the representative from Cronos, we have a PowerPoint presentation, if y'all wanna see it. It's, it's very short.
It's about two and a half to three minutes, at the most.
Are y'all interested in seeing it?
Ma'am, could you email it to us?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, so we don't take time up in a meeting, we could, you know, check it out between now and the next meeting.
Basically, he just summarizes what I said already, so.
Sure. In two minutes, okay. Any other discussion? None proceeded. The vote is in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 16, discussion action, direct city staff concerning the street CIP portion of the Pleasant Master Plan 2025. Our engineer, Klein and Co. Engineering. I broke it down for us pretty good, so if you wanna summarize and give us your recommendation?
Sure. Counsel, the purpose of those items to get further direction from counsel regarding completion of the design phase of the, of the street project. The streets that have been chosen for rehabbing are Cynthia, Main, High Meadow, and Windship. Mr. Pearson said earlier that the streets were chosen in accordance with staff input regarding those that have the most concerning issues. The reasoning on, on each street was noted there. Cynthia was due to the condition of the street and the fact that it had been promised since the 90s, and, and it was in one of, one of the worst ones in, in consideration. The Main Street is due to the condition of the street and the council's choice to, to bring focus to, to the downtown area. High Meadow, once again, with the condition of the street and, and school traffic, with its importance to ingress and egress to and from the school. And Windship was also with the condition of it, and it's important, it's a thoroughfare that connected 97 to 3350. At this point, we'll have a presentation from Brian Coe with Klein and Co. Engineering. And after, after that, we'll extend to the options.
Thank you all. This is Mr. Meddymich. My name is Brian Coe with Klein and Co. Engineering. I've been assisting the city through this street design phase. We are, I don't know, I'm gonna get my slides. I'll, I'll go through this as quickly as possible. It's not long, but a lot of this has already been talked about, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Meddymich. The four streets we're concentrating on are Cynthia, High Meadow, Windship, and Main. These were basically the, some of the top prioritized streets out of some 20-odd streets that are in, that are in the plan, so these are the streets that we're focusing on now. Again, that's just kind of a general location map of the streets of what we're doing. Main Street would be all the way basically from the Civic Center to Binsdale, and Cynthia Street from Pulliam to Crestline. And the, the Windship and High Meadow would be basically from there to connecting streets. So, once, once we determined which streets we're, we're gonna do, the city went out and hired a geotechnical firm to come out and do the samples. They sampled probably approximately 15 streets. They took cores on all of them. What we wanted to learn is what, what material's there? Are we gonna try to reuse existing material? Or are we just gonna excavate out what's there and come back with new material? So, based on their, based on their findings, they did give us recommendations for each street. Each street not only is, was recommended based on its actual use. You know, the Cynthia Drive is, is more of a residential rural street, so that, that, that was given a set of criteria versus Windship, that sees a lot of truck traffic getting from 97 over, over to Goodwin area. So the different loadings kinda come into play. And the, the, the recommendations from the engineering company basically were what we expected. Full reconstruction, which would be to come back with new base, new everything. What we found is a lot of the streets just didn't have a lot of material underneath the asphalt. So, another recommendation they gave us was, let's just kind of reclaim, what we call reclaim all that, mix it up, add some new base, work it in. So those were the, those were the main ones. And then we have another option of where we could use black base, or what we, also known as asphalt-treated base, that stronger rock, it's coated with asphalt material. There, there's an equation. If we need two and a half inches of crushed limestone base, that's equal to one inch of this black base. And it, it is more expensive, but y'all, if, if time is a factor of getting roads back open, black base is a great alternative to use to help minimize downtime for, for these constructions. These are, for the most part, pretty, pretty busy streets, the Main Street and Windship. So, you know, we, you wanna, don't wanna drag on a project as long as we wanna get in, get out, get the product we're looking at.
Can I get you to move that paper off the mic? I think that's what's giving us...
Excuse me.
Thank you.
So basically, Cynthia Drive, we're looking at that in our preliminary design phase, rural section. Not, not a heck of a whole lot to it, and there are some options where, where we're looking at as far as the reclaiming. And when we get into final design, we'll, we're, we're gonna put this out to bid for reconstruction and reclaim, see what's best for the city and go with, go with that selection. Cynthia Drive has the, the trees that are out in the middle, so that's, what are we gonna do with these trees? Are we gonna create a median around them? Are we gonna get rid of them? What are we gonna do? So those things we're exploring. We are working with a landscape architect and arborist. What can we do to make sure, if we're, if we're gonna save these trees, what precautions do we need to take now? Because, as we all know, the oak tree root system is within that first two to three feet of the soil there. And, you know, that, some of the recommendations on these streets for the repair are gonna, are 17 inches, 12 inches can be right through that, right through that root zone. So what can we do to protect the trees? And so we're, we're, we're still finding out what, what we wanna do. Another thing with the rural section up there, that, that may be something the city will be interested in, is, is putting a ribbon curb along, along the streets. And this is something we, as more streets in that area get reconstructed, we would, we would look at doing this if, if y'all so choose. These are some samples of, of a rural section that's kinda similar up there, just a crown with, with the barded swell that carry the drainage. The ribbon curb adds a nice touch to it, but it also helps keep that, keeps the structural integrity of the, of the street intact. You know, if you don't, in some areas, if you don't have a curb, that shoulder just kinda tends to roll off over time as cars drive on it, whatever. So, so this is something we, we proposed for, for the city to look at, and we'll have further discussions on, you know, if this is something we want, we wanna move forward with.
Okay.
The reconstruction of High Meadow Drive and Windship Road, basically, is just reconstruction. High Meadow does have curbs, so we would, we would look at replacing the curbs that are there. There's, if you're familiar, you actually have two types of curbing on High Meadow Drive right now. There's a traditional curb and gutter, and then further north on the street, it's more of a, a block. And so what, part, part of this project, we would look at be replacing the curbs from point A to point B, all the way up, get a nice, good section in there. Windship Road, that one is, is a rural section, and that one's, we, basically, the, the Crown Street with, with the swells on the side to ca, to carry the runoff where it needs to go. That one will be a little, that one will be your, probably our heavier section, just for the type of street that it is. Main Street, again, we'd be looking at street reconstruction, replacing curbs, adding sidewalks, where there are sidewalks, adding wheelchair ADA ramps at the intersections that, that will be needed. Another, another thing we're looking at on Main Street is maybe continuing the, the lighting that we have across the street at the Civic Center, running north with that antique style of lighting. So that's something else where we're pursuing to see what, see what that may, may be in the direction the city wants to move forward. But we, we kinda, this is a project that, that I did a few years ago in another city where we, we did exactly that. We took the antique lighting and, and strung it up, strung it up down there in Main Street, and it really, really kinda brought a sense of, you know, I don't know what to say, but it's pedestrian-friendly, down in their business district. Now, your lights, I believe, are opening up the intersections, and, you know, they're really just shining for safety on the cars. These, these would be spaced periodically throughout, throughout the whole corridor to, to rent that, you know, friendly walking area to, to help bring that stuff down to the Civic Center. So these are just some slides that we took, and I'm not a good photographer, obviously, because it's kinda hard to see the lights, but, uh... This is one that kinda has, as, as, as the lights came on, that was, was kind of a good shot that kinda portrayed what, what could look up here on your Main Street. I added this picture to the right just to kinda show what the, how far out into the street each light kinda projects, because right now, we provision, this, this particular city, we did it on one side only. We would probably expect to stair-step them all the way up Main Street here in Pleasanton, just to give that atmosphere. And, and there was a concern that we, we would have here as well, you know? Main Street has commercial businesses, and it looks like there's some residential properties as well. And, and one of the things is, well, I don't wanna light shining in my, my living room window all night. So there's, there's things we can do to these antique lights, or any lighting. In this particular town, we, we put some shields on the back, on the residence side, so the light was all reflected out, out through the street. So... Right now, our preliminary design, these are the, these are the budget numbers we're using right now. Cynthia Drive is about 300,000. High Meadow Drive, about 650,000. Windship, 600,000. And Main Street, obviously, with curb and, curb and gutter and everything, was a little bit more of the longer street than the others, was about 1.25 million. But right now, our total estimate was 2.8 million for these four streets. I think there's around four in the, in the plan at this point.
Yeah, I think it'd be important to mention, too, Mr. Coe, if you would, your, your preliminary estimate was about 2.8, but you had a well-known contractor take a look at it, and his estimate was about 4.2. So somewhere in there, obviously, is, is what we'd look at. But you are planning on, with direction from council, is putting these streets out for bid with all three different types of construction, and then we would look at what would be best.
Yeah.
Not only for the long-lasting, enduring quality of the street, but the economic component for the city as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pacifica?
On the Cynthia Drive, because of the trees, are we going to, are you going to have a, a price with what you want to, what you, with saving the trees, and a price without the trees as a comparison?
You know, that, in all honesty, from the construction standpoint, there's probably not much price difference. The only price difference would be the removal of the tree. And maybe not putting the concrete curb island around the trees, so...
Well, if you save the trees, don't you have to widen the street there?
Right.
Do that?
The, the, the current lane is about 10 feet now. We would continue to maintain that width. I mean, well, it could go so far within your right-of-way. So that, that tree island's gonna take up 25% of it, or 30%.
Okay.
So we would have a one-way lane on each, each side of, each side of the islands. So, you know, it's, and, and as we get into our final designs and our recommendations from the arborist, what can we do, you know, because either way, we're, we're cutting into the structure and, and... The one picture, I don't know if you can tell, but it already had a utility trench cut through there. So, and it, and from what I hear, that utility happened a handful of years ago, and it, they, they appear to be holding up. But as far as taking everything out and bringing it back, that's what we, that's why we're going to the arborist to say, what, what can we do, you know? We hate to get rid of oak trees.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, we're doing our, our homework to see what we can do to keep, keep that tree, or both, both islands.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Ms. Science?
Observing and listening to this conversation, pretending to leaving trees. My past experience, I can name some districts within Pleasanton where, at the time, the trees were left in the center and then concreted around it and everything like that, and that nature. It cost the city quite a bit of money because eventually those trees died. It cost the city quite a bit of money, because eventually, those trees died. And it was stated that concrete is hot, you know, too hot, especially in the summertime, so actually, that's why it caused for the trees to die and start falling on vehicles, residents, and close to, you know, to the area, big trees, I'm not going to, and Mr. Gagel is one of the persons that he, a very well person to preserve trees, but he, lucky that he's still alive, and I'm glad he is, because it was something fatal. And I'm not a believer in leaving trees in the middle of the street. I never have been. I've been against it for years now, and I wouldn't like to see this to continue. I mean, a tree is a tree, sure, a lot of people are tree lovers. I like plants, I like this, but not trees in the middle of the street. It's been a lot of fatalities on the west side part of town. When developers start building, they left trees in the middle of the street. There were some youngsters, who, you know how it is, high school kids or whatever, racing or whatever, banged, they got killed. So, I mean, I don't think I could support that, to be honest with you. Politely and very outspoken, I will not support a tree in the middle of a street, or close to a resident, real, real big trees, because oak trees are, it's coming to, to an age that I have noticed through the years of my lifetime here in Pleasanton, they're deteriorating and falling, and that we're endangering with that issue.
Mr. Sines, that's, that's one of the things we're looking at too. It's not only if we go through there and take that street, existing street, and base material out, how much of the root structure will we potentially damage, but when we come back with a new street and two inches of asphalt, there is not going to be any water getting through that asphalt. Is that tree going to be able to survive, having so much cover over the root structure? And that's one thing we'll, we'll examine with the arborist, much like what we did with the oak tree over here at the entrance to the Civic Center, when the arborist's recommendation was to have somewhere between thirty-five and forty percent of that tree to have water underneath it. And we don't know that we'll have thirty to thirty-five percent of that tree with water underneath it, with asphalt on both sides. So, we're looking at not only, what are we going to do, taking the existing street up as far as any damage, but when we come back with asphalt, is that tree going to even survive after that, not having air and water to that root structure?
With my experience, I mean, I don't want to get towards your suggestions and everything like that, I do a little respect for that, but I've seen a lot of things happening, and trees don't survive too long afterwards.
We can certainly come back to council after the arborist's recommendation and get direction from council on what you want us to do.
That's fine.
Mayor.
Ms. Sines. Ms. Gagos.
Before you go cutting any trees down, make sure you let the residents in that street and the city council know, because I think when this was discussed to pave Cynthia, it was agreed that the streets take, within the street, but I may be wrong. I've been sitting here too long, twenty-three years, but I think that was my understanding, so be cautious about cutting old trees.
Well, that's, that'll all come to light when we go through this, so...
Later.
Any other questions?
That's all I have, mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
Yeah, I just have one question or comment. Do we know how old the trees are, and if we don't, could you get the arborist to give us an estimate? Just out of curiosity.
Most of these trees are between eight and ten-inch caliper trees. Maybe a little bit.
I think they're, when I'm, I actually measured them for the arborist a couple days ago, and I believe one was eighteen inches diameter, and one was a little bit more than that, twenty-four.
So, they're not really old trees that we're talking about?
And, and one of them's pretty banged up. I mean, I don't know from what, but that's one of the comments that he had, is like, that one tree is pretty, pretty scarred already, but, but we, you know...
That'll all come out in this, you know, if we decide to go this direction, it'll all come out in that, right?
My last slide, I'll jump to it. Forward, you know, we're going to have utility coordination meetings on Main Street, and we're also going to have the, the neighborhood, you know, we're going to have a meeting to let them know, hey, we're going to be building this street, so, so your comment about that, I think we'll flush all that out, so we will let the public know what's going on, so we're, you know, we're trying to get these streets in great shape for everybody to use, and, you know, we definitely want, you know, we don't want to leave the citizens out in that process. That basically is my presentation, and, you know, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer some more questions, or, you know, John can wrap up here if y'all are through with me.
Ms. Garza?
I'd like to move that we direct the city staff concerning the street, CIP, portion of the President Master Plan, two thousand twenty-five. It is my recommendation that the council direct city staff to complete the process of preparing these design plans and advertise for bids for the street construction project.
Second.
We moved in second to direct city staff to complete the process of preparing design plans and advertise for the bid for street construction project. Is that correct, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? None proceeded to vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
He voted affirmative. Item number eighteen is discussion action, propose amendments to the city charter A, section, article nine, section five.
About seventeen. Seventeen.
I already had it marked off. I guess we can go in order. All right, number seventeen is discussion action, direct city management staff to develop a possible interlocal agreement with Adeskos County Commissioners Court to repair the drainage flooding issue on FM 3350 and the south entrance to Liberty Lane.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager and staff to develop a possible interlocal agreement with Adeskos County Commissioners Court to repair the drainage flooding issues at FM 3350 and the south entrance to Liberty Lane.
We moved in second to direct city manager and staff to develop a possible interlocal agreement with Adeskos County Commissioners Court to repair the drainage flooding issues at FM 3350 and the south entrance of Liberty Lane. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Gagos.
Any thank you for that agenda, that's long overdue. We vote for commissioners, they don't do very much for us in town, so I think this is a good start.
Great.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I just have one thing to add to that, besides thank you for your support. I've had several discussions with at least one commissioner, as far as the length of time that that has gone unaddressed, and I think that the discussion will be possible.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Other discussion? None proceeded to vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Pose same sign, motion carries. Item number eighteen is, affirmative. Item number eighteen is discussion action on proposed amendments to the city charter A, Article Nine, Section Five, Terms of Office, B, Article Nine, Section Seven, Compensation, C, Article Sixteen, Section One, Director of Finance, Powers and Duties, D, Article Sixteen, Section Eight, Contracts for City Improvements.
Mayor, I'll just say they're listed A through D, so the council consider each one individually and vote each one individually, yea or nay.
Or as a whole, if...
Or as a whole.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward on the proposed amendments to the city charter, Article Four, Section Five, Terms of Office. I'm just going to go A, B, C, D.
Ms. Israel, could I ask you to amend your motion on C?
Hang on, Mr. Cruz, are you finished with your motion?
Yeah, let me make it very clear. Discussion and action, I move to move forward on the proposed amendments to the city charter A, B, C, and D.
May I request from the staff level and advice of the city attorney that C, that you amend it to say Article Sixteen, Section D. Section D outlines the city secretary as ex officio city treasurer, and that would be inserted as director of finance, and I did visit with the chairman of the charter review committee this evening.
Mr. Maldonado, any problem with just changing that, knowing that that's part of it? Do we need to go back and read all these as written?
I don't have a problem with it changing, because, because, well, I'm looking at Article, it does say Article Sixteen, Section One. And I believe you're referring to a different, oh, it says Section One, right?
Yeah.
Okay. No, what, Mr. Pearson is fine, because it was posted as the entire section.
Okay.
Right.
Mayor, I have a question.
We felt like when we discussed it last night, it called out Section L, which was adding a section.
We're getting way off our, because we have just had a motion be made.
No seconds.
It's been seconded. All right, it's been moved in second to move forward to propose amendments for the city charter A, B, C, and D. Any discussion?
Yes, mayor.
Ms. Gagos.
Get to that page.
Page one oh nine of the packet.
Yeah, I went over.
That's the first one.
Yeah, that's my question right there.
This is the very first item.
On Article Four, Section Five, I think the intent is to change it to two, three-year terms, but if you go down to about the middle of the paragraph, it changes. It, this provision takes effect with the May 2014. I think that's supposed to be, this provision takes effect with the May 2015 election, not fourteen. And then the very last sentence, it says, a person may not be elected to serve up to four terms as a council member, and up to another four terms as mayor. I think that's supposed to say two terms, council member in two terms, mayor not four.
No, I think what it is, is because they said that it's too consecutive, so somebody could sit out and run again. The way I'm understanding this, and if the intent is wrong, it's you can run for two consecutive three-year terms, then you'd have to not run, and then you could come back, and you still have two more terms you could run for. So, that would allow for four total to either a position as council or mayor, or eight total, if you look at it that way. So, it would give you a chance to run four different times, just no more than two consecutive terms. Is that correct? That was the intent?
I, you know, I think Ms. Sampson could tell us what the intent was, but that's how I understood it.
Ms. Sampson, could you, would you mind clarifying that for us?
Would you say it again?
The way that I read it, and I get what Mr., because I had to read it twice, but Mr. Gagos was asking, and I'll try to speak for you, because I know your voice is weak. Is this saying that you can run for two consecutive three-year terms? So, and the way the last sentence is written, a person may be elected to serve up to four terms as council member, and up to another four as mayor, so you could run for another two consecutive terms, you just couldn't do them, the two sets couldn't be consecutive? So, you could run for two, sit out, and run for two more. Is that the intent? Okay.
Was it two or three?
It's two, three-year terms.
Three-year terms.
Two.
Two, you can sit out, come back down.
Mayor?
Uh, wait on, Mr. Gagos, stand on the floor. You done?
Oh, I, I, well, does that May 2014 need to change? Is changed?
Was that?
Yeah, we can, we can change that.
To 2015.
I think that, that second sentence there clarifies it, where it says, there shall be a limit of two consecutive three-year terms served, with no person to serve more than four total three-year terms as a council member.
On the bottom, it says, a person may be elected to serve up to four terms, and to me, each term is three years, so four times three is twelve.
Right.
That's the way I'm interpreting.
Correct. That's correct.
And it could be challenged, because that is saying I can run four three-year terms, because you're not, you're talking about terms. Four terms, and each term would be three years.
Correct.
But not mayor?
Hang on, Mr., let's, let's have Mr. Gagos finish.
So, I still don't understand the change there.
Well, right now...
You can serve six years, sit down, and run four more times at six years each?
No. You can run for two terms, which would be six years, you would have to sit out, and then you can run for two more terms at six years.
Totally twelve years.
It's a total of twelve years through three-year terms, and just, only two can be consecutive.
Okay, I understand the consecutive.
Okay.
So, you can run four different times consecutive?
Correct. You can hold the office through four different terms.
Just not...
Just not consecutive after two.
You have to have a break in there.
Okay. Ms. Israel.
I just wanted to clarify, it's exactly the same way as it is now, you can do six years, but it's three two-year terms, and then you sit out one, and then you can run three two-year terms, which is a total of twelve years, but you had to sit, break it up in the middle. What they're doing is eliminating the need for council to have to run an election in the middle. So, you get to serve two three-year terms and only have two elections instead of three, but you're serving six, and the maximum amount served is twelve. So, that's all that's changing.
Okay, my second question on this is, or third question, if this does pass in May, how does it affect the present council members and the new council members?
The new council members would only have to adhere to this, but, Mr. Maldonado, maybe you can help us in the case of, let's just, can we, do you mind if we use you as an example?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Gagos is going to be, finish his last term, because he is termed out. What does that mean to him, by the way this is written?
Let me go back to it.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, how does it affect you and Abraham, and how does it affect the new council members coming on?
The new council, whoever gets, if this passes, whoever gets elected in May will be serving a three-year term.
I have a question.
That's exactly how it's written. Hang on, hang on, let's, let's let Mr. Maldonado answer one question. So, what we're, what we're trying to find out is, in the case of, and what he's asking in the case, like, in his case, he's termed out. What does that mean to him?
From the looks of this, it means that if he remains in the same district, he'd be sitting out until that new term expires, which would be three years, as opposed to the current two.
And then he could run one more time.
Two more.
Or two more times.
Two more times.
Okay. Now, what he's asking, the case of, like, me and Mr. Sines, who are not termed out, and are, if we run in May and get elected, we'll have one three-year term left, and then we will be termed out.
So, this may give you three-year mayor instead of two years, if it goes into effect?
Yes.
That's my point.
Yes.
That is, that's the way I understand it.
I have a question.
How does it affect the newcomers?
They just follow by this. They've got, they've got two three-year terms, they'd have to sit out one, and they could run for two more three-year terms.
So, you filed for a two-year term when you filed, but you might get three years if you're elected.
Of course, to run for election.
For a two-year term, is what it says.
No, but, but, that's, that's not at all, has nothing to do with the connection.
I'm just saying, could it be possible that if this passes, you will not only serve two years, you could serve up to three?
No, that means that the term would be three years after that. Once this happens in May, it is what it is. It's exactly like it's...
I know, but will that give you three years?
It would give anybody elected in May three years, me and anybody else included.
I have a question.
And then, okay, so the newcomers will start at three, issue three, and Abraham will be out next year.
That's correct. I believe that's the way it works. I'm starting to get confused. Mr. Garza?
I have a question for Bobby. Should this not be applicant for the people that vote on it? Should it be waited till the new people come in, instead of, because we're voting for it? That, that's not quite fair. It should be applied to...
Well, the problem is, it has to, it has to come up this May, so we'll always have somebody coming up.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not right.
But you'll always have somebody coming due in May, so you'll never, you would never be able to process it.
When you vote for it, I don't think you should be, you shouldn't be applying it.
But then you would never be able to apply it.
The, the problem with what you're suggesting, Mr. Garza, is that if you can't vote for it, if it applies to you, then that would limit your ability to vote for, for this evening, which defeats the purpose of voting on the amendment, proposed amendment itself. The mayor's right, it's always going to affect some of you, unless the language, the language is proposed to affect you in a staggered manner, but even then, it might just create more confusion. What the mayor suggests is correct, this would replace the current language, but by definition, it's going to affect how you continue to serve as the new provision is defined.
Mayor?
I don't agree with it, two, three years. I think it should be two years.
Ms. Israel.
Yes. Let me see if I can clarify this, I haven't...
No, I think we've got it clear. I don't, just not muddy it. Yeah, I don't want to muddy the water anymore.
I don't, I don't want to muddy it at all, it's been pretty muddy.
It was muddy, because we had to change the charter.
So, is there any other discussion?
It's now.
Thank you.
The way to get it...
And then, then again, I mean, we do have to understand that these are amendments that we're proposing. They'd have to be voted on in the election in May, correct? So we're just saying, hey, the citizens get to decide this stuff. That's what it boils down to. We're not making the decision to enact this. The citizens will make that decision.
Quick question. I, I don't know. I, I, it happens. I mean, too much rebuttal, but you can run for, again, for another election, for reelection.
I'm, I'm out. After this term, it's my last term.
Not if it changes to three.
We understand.
Just like mine. Is that right?
It changes to three, three-year.
I didn't look at it like that.
Yeah, it is. That's what I understand it.
Uh, Mr. Maldonado.
Can you stay in my mouth or you're going to be able to run again or what?
Yes, Abraham, because you're on your last term. You have one year, he has a two-year term. But if the three-year term, he should get the three years.
He will.
He will.
He will. He will. Anybody, Mr. Maldonado and I were just visiting, anybody presently sitting would get a three-year term or anybody elected would get a three-year term.
So long as it doesn't bump up against the language of the new provision as to terms or years. Okay?
I don't agree with that.
That's a dirty politician, comedian.
Yeah, it's a mess.
That's the only way they could get me out.
Any other discussion? Remember, this is all, all this does, this vote tonight, whether we say yes or no, it's saying, do the citizens need to vote on this? Because this is not our decision.
If we, Mayor, if we vote on each one individually and the majority votes not to put it on the ballot, where do we go from there?
We don't put it on the ballot.
It doesn't, doesn't come up unless it's, it's done unless it comes back up.
I call for the question.
What was the motion?
The motion was, and there was no second to the, uh, call for the question, so.
Okay.
Debate is still open, but do remember, there is really supposed to be two times to discuss an item and then you've exhausted your ability to debate. And I believe we're verging on that with everybody. Um, the motion was to move forward on the proposed amendments of the city charter, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
No, no, no. That was the motion.
So you're, we're voting them all together?
Yes. The, the way the motion was written is, the, the motion is to move forward with the proposed amendments of the city charter, A, B, C, and D. That is the motion. If there's no other discussion, we'll proceed to vote on that motion.
Yes.
All who's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign.
No.
Motion carries.
I'll oppose.
Item number 19 is discussion, action to reschedule the March 5th, 2015 city council meeting due to conflict with the president and chamber of commerce awards banquet.
That would be to schedule, with recommendation, mayor would be to schedule it on Wednesday, March 4th before the banquet.
All right. Ms. Pacifica.
I make a motion that we, uh, amend or.
Reschedule.
Reschedule the, uh, March 5th, 2015 city council meeting to show, due to the conflict with President, President Pleasanton, forgot where it was, Chamber of Commerce Awards Banquet to March the 4th, 2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reschedule the March 5th, 2015 city council meeting due to conflict with the president and chamber of commerce awards banquet to March 4th, 2015. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote. If it's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number 20 is regular session of February 5th, 2015 is hereby recessed to hold an executive session pursuant of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, subchapter D. As it pertains to real property, 551.072, council, we're still in session at this point. In consultation with an attorney, 551.071, executive session matters may be voted upon and directed upon if appropriate in open session. The time is 8:55 PM. The regular session of the city council is hereby reconvene February 5th, 2015 at eight, I'm sorry, nine, 21 PM. Uh, item number 21 is discussion and possible action concerning the possible sale of city-owned right-of-way between Highway 97, east of Fifth Street and Market and Crockett Street and the Fourth Street right-of-way between Crockett and Market Street.
Mayor?
Ms. Gagos.
I move to approve the possible sale of the city-owned right-of-way between Highway 97 East and Fifth Street and Market and Crockett Street and Fourth Street right-of-way between Crockett and Market as discussed in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the possible sale of the city-owned right-of-way between Highway 97 East and Fifth Street and Market and Crockett Street and Fourth Street right-of-way between Crockett and Market Street as discussed in executive.
Mayor, I would like to remove the word possible.
Yes.
Just the move, to move to sale.
Would you maintain your second?
Yes.
All right. So the motion is to, uh, approve the sale of the city-owned right-of-way between Highway 97 East and Fifth Street and Market and Crockett Street and the Fourth Street right-of-way between Crockett and Market Street as discussed in executive session. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote. If it's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number 24 is discussion and possible action concerning the possible sale of Vareto Street right-of-way, uh, west of High Meadow. And I believe we need to dismiss the item.
Yes, Mayor.
Excuse me?
I move to dismiss agenda item.
Second.
It's moved seconded to dismiss agenda item number 24. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote. If it's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number 25 is discussion and possible action concerning case 15-01-0064-CVA.
Mayor?
Ms. Gagos.
I move that we direct the city attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session concerning case number 15010064CVN.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the city attorney to proceed as directed in executive session concerning case number 15-01-0064-CVA. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote. If it's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 26, uh, no action required.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to dismiss agenda item number 26.
Mr. Best seconded. It's moved and seconded to, uh, dismiss agenda item number 26. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote. If it's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Mr. Best. Uh, item number 27 is review of the bills.
Sir.
No, sir.
No, if there's none, we'll proceed to agenda item.
We adjourn. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All who's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Meeting is adjourned at 9:24 PM.